Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is the March 23rd, 2021 regular meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'm calling this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending. Tonight, we have some special recognitions. Dr. Morrison, will you introduce our guest?
We're actually going to have our Director of Communications, Justin Marino, come up, and we're really excited to have some amazing employees of our school district to be recognized tonight.
Good morning, Board and Dr. Morrison. This month is National School Nutrition Month, and we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our dedicated child nutrition professionals.
Yeah, okay.
They brought the full team.
Yes. Takes a lot to feed the kids.
So again, March is National Nutrition Month. We also celebrated National School Breakfast Week earlier in March, and this is a great time to recognize these dedicated employees who play such a critical role in the social and emotional, non-academic needs of our children by keeping them fed. Research shows that children who are fed with nutritious meals perform better academically, so they play an absolute critical role in our mission of serving our children. I have our Director, Lena Nujabauer, our Assistant Director, Krista Scott, our Cafeteria Managers, our all-ten Cafeteria Managers are in attendance here tonight. We have Prudence Teeter from Keenan Elementary School, LeAnn Keating from Lone Star Elementary School, Melinda King from Montgomery Elementary School, Kim Boudreau from Lincoln Elementary School, Tanya Wilkerson from Madley Ranch Elementary School, Jamie Cooper from Stewart Creek Elementary School, Kathy Gilmore from Montgomery Junior High School, Gina Coas from Oak Hills Junior High School, Pamela Barkis from Lake Creek High School, and Sherri Smith from Montgomery High School, and Tina Bozart, one of our field supervisors, and all the other ladies here tonight. Thank you for being here. Can we, we'll try to get a photo opportunity. We have a video we'd like to show recognizing their work.
Our child nutrition department is a quiet strength on our campus, and I think for every campus. They know all of the little things. Many times, they're one of the first adults to interact with our kids for the day. They see them at breakfast, they see kids for breakfast and lunch. When we open the doors, almost always, our child nutrition managers are the first ones on the campus. Our child nutrition department have gone so far as to write positive notes on a banana. So they love that. They love to be built up by anyone, but to know that there's somebody else cheering for them in their corner, asking them how their day went, making sure there's a smile on their face. We started snack at Montgomery High School two years ago. This is our third year, and we have a great group of kids over there, and they do all kinds of taste testings, and they give great ideas on, hey, you know, this is something that we would like to see, and we try to do our best to make it happen.
On the campus, we are the bridge between the students and cafeteria in a way. We are the voice for the students to what we would like to see in cafeteria.
I mean, these kids come in and they pay for a meal, and we want it to be what they want, and we want it to be of the quality that they deserve.
They value our opinions and what we like to see in the menu, and that's the whole point of the whole sampling, to get feedback, to see if we can improve the food here, but also keep it nutritious.
They're the ones that empower our kids to become their own advocate. They're teaching four-year-olds and five-year-olds how to order for themselves, how to put those numbers into the machine, and they create little leaders in our school.
It means the world because it shows that they care about what we're eating and what's going on in their system, because it's super important, because at school, so much of our daily intakes are from the school food, and they're trying to make it enjoyable to eat, but also nutritious at the same time.
Our ladies work so hard, and they love what they do, and they love students.
First of all, I can't tell you how proud I am to be their leader, that the staff here today, if this gives you any indication of the contribution and of the leadership that they have in each one of the cafeterias and what they are doing for the students of Montgomery ISD. Between breakfast and lunch, they serve over 6,000 meals a day, and so they are pretty tired. I mean, is that not awesome? I just cannot tell you enough of how I admire all of these ladies. We have 75 ladies and one dude. So we are 76-strong, and I love every single one of them, and I couldn't get a better staff than what I have now. So, thank you.
So, we always hear how great this department is, and how well you function, and how well you're a team, and I've heard it, I don't know how many times, but I do know Ms. Denise makes something over there at Lone Star Elementary. The teachers love whatever it is you're making over there for dessert, because that is a constant topic of discussion, but Ms. Denise, whatever you're making, I gotta come over there and get it, so you guys are.
Mr. Hopkins, this is actually a nice evening, but I have a little problem with Denise, because at the beginning of the year, she heard I liked pie, and I heard she makes a mean pie. I'm still waiting on that pie, okay? I'm sure it's awesome, but I can't attest to what I have not had, so, but she is pretty awesome, I gotta say.
She is pretty awesome, and she's been here a long time and is well-known, so Ms. Denise, thank you, and thank you to all of you. I think you all do a great job.
Can I say something real quick, too? Years ago, when my kids were here in this building at MES, the cafeteria was also giving a Student of the Month Award, and I don't know how many campuses still do that, but it was so special when my own children received that from the cafeteria workers. It meant a lot, and the cafeteria workers always knew my kids' names, and so I just really appreciate that.
We'll try, we'll do our best to try for a photo op. If you all like to come forward, maybe the Board stand up behind them.
They're gonna have to get way back to get us all in. I'm there, how are you?
I'm trying to use chairs.
Okay, means a sign. Let's see, I'm gonna have to get in an angle, we get all y'all. Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. All right, got it.
Mike, it was a pecan pie. I don't forget that.
Really not a lot to think about, it's seven to, campus, 10 campuses. Think so, yeah.
Once again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you to our nutrition department. They're a very talkative group, so that's a good sign that they're working hard together. All right. We do have a number of public comments tonight. I'd like to first, we will be limiting the time to three minutes. We do have a number of them, and just a reminder, under the Open Meetings Act, we cannot respond to public comments. You know, we are not trying to be mean, we're not trying to be rude, we're not trying to be dismissive. It's just a matter of Texas law that we cannot publicly comment, respond, take action, and so please don't be offended by that. We do certainly want to hear what you have to say. And so with that, I'll start with Michelle Lacour.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm addressing the Board because back when Lake Creek High School first went into opening up its brand-new school, the community was addressed and told that anything that happened at Montgomery High School would also go for the students at Lake Creek High School. With that being said, there is a certified medical assistance program at Lake Creek High School. From what I understand and everything that I've heard and saw, that the students at MHS are allowed to go out on rotations, being at a veterinarian clinic or chiropractor clinic, and the students at Lake Creek High School have not been given that same opportunity. I have addressed administration at Lake Creek High School, and it's been over 90-plus days, and I still don't have an answer. The only thing that just came out, that once they get their certification, then they can go and find a job, and then they can go out and do their rotations. But that's not the same opportunity for both schools and students. So I'm just bringing this to the Board, so y'all would be aware of it as well, and hopefully the class of 2021 will be able to get a prom this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lacour. Next, Jason Drood.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I was here to talk about the mask, and as far as I understand, you guys hadn't made a decision one way or the other. I was gonna ask if you could please, for the sake of the health of the children and the teachers, to continue this for the rest of the school year. You know, we just got the notice today that all adults in the state of Texas, starting at the end of this month, can start being vaccinated. I myself have my first one. We're, feels like we're looking at the tail end of this pandemic, but it would feel premature to end it right now and possibly risk like an outbreak, possibly risk, you know, teachers having to stay home and quarantine, and having classes have to go virtual suddenly. So, you know, I just ask that, you know, you consider that and that you guys would continue on with this. Thanks.
Thank you. Alicia Embry.
I recently had a few things that came up. I have two children at Montgomery Schools, one in high school and one in elementary. My daughter in high school was in class and had her mask below her nose, and the teacher asked her to, you know, wear her mask properly, and she just said, you know, it's really hot in here, it's kind of hard to breathe. And he snapped at her in the classroom and basically said that she's not gonna be responsible for leaving his five children without a father because she doesn't know how to wear her mask. My daughter went home crying to me. I started thinking about, not only from my daughter's perspective, what's that, what is that doing to our children, the psychological impacts of having an adult speak to her in that way in front of all of her peers, but I also started thinking about it from the teacher's perspective and the amount of just fear that it would have taken in order to have a teacher feel that that would happen, you know, and where is the logic in that if we're social distancing and he has a mask on, and they're all asymptomatic, you know, what is the likelihood that someone 15 feet away, because their nose is being exposed? The second thing that happened was I got a call on Friday from my youngest daughter, she's in kindergarten, saying that she was in close contact with someone who had tested positive for COVID, and that I immediately needed to come and pick her up. So I'm a single mom, I work in the banking industry, and, you know, she wasn't allowed to ride the bus, even though it was 30 minutes to bus time. I have to ask my boss to leave work, I have to run home. They're telling me she has to quarantine. We went through the entire, you know, quarantine situation, we went through that weekend, we went through five days of spring break, and then the following weekend, she was at her father's house that weekend, and he returned her the following Monday. I'm on my way to work Monday morning, and then I get a call from the school saying that because she had not had the COVID testing, that she was not, you know, apparently it was like 10 days and she was at nine. So again, I have to turn around, I have to leave work, I have to go pick up my child. You know, I'm just thinking about the common sense perspective, what is the likelihood that you can have an unsymptomatic individual for nine days, and then they're gonna come back to school on the 10th day, and then they're gonna spread COVID to everybody? You know, I just, I've been thinking a lot about, you know, the lady when I spoke to the school about it, I was very upset, and, you know, the answer I kept getting over and over again was, we're following the rules, we're following the rules, we're following the rules. What I'm asking you as a mother, as a citizen who loves this country, I'm asking you to please stop with the politics and actually look, you know, as a banker, we look, two major things we look at, we look at the character of the individual that we are lending money to, right? And we make sure that there's no conflicts of interest. When we are looking at these guidelines and we are handing them down throughout our entire country, I think it's very important for us to maybe ask questions like, who's the one that's making billions of dollars at the top of this? And how are those policies and procedures being implemented? And what are the conflicts of interest particular to those individuals? We know that, you know, the NIH and Moderna, we know the shareholder conflicts there, we know that, you know, Bill Gates stands to make billions of dollars, and so does Fauci, and now he's the largest shareholder. I mean, I don't want to go off on a tangent here, but I think it's important that, you know, we look at the conflicts of interest here and make sure that we're not just blindly following policy and procedures, and that we're looking at common sense measures and making sure that we're doing it for the right reasons, because there are millions of people, and their lives are being affected by these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chad McLean.
Good evening. My name's Chad. I'm a parent here in Montgomery, born and raised here in Tomball in Montgomery my whole life. I'm almost 40 years old, proud to be here. I was playing on the lake when it was full of lily pads and hydrola. I've got four kids, all in the school district, a high schooler, a junior high, two elementary, really busy between the three schools. So the thing is, is I'm here, unlike the gentleman in the black shirt, there's no way in good conscience I can continue to support this mandate for the mask, and I'm only gonna ask a few requests, they can be considered. I know the decision does not lie with me, but I can tell you as a father that the mandate is damning. It's hurting the children, they're coming home in tears, they're being called names, they're being criticized by their teachers. My student, I have one in junior high school who's been physically grabbed by a teacher, physically grabbed him on the arm, which I've read the rules, unless it's for the safety of the child or for the safety of another, they can't touch a child. I let it go, it's no big deal. My kids have been told that, don't they want to be a part of saving the world? I can go on and on for an hour. My kid, one teacher went up to him, ticked it one over his nose, and she said, what's your name? And he says, I don't feel comfortable giving you my name, which he has the right to do. She ended up, she ended up getting the name from another teacher, and I had to have an hour-long meeting with assistant principal and principal over my son exercising his actual rights to not give up his name to someone he does not know. It's gone so far that my son decided to wear a T-shirt that just said, make mask optional. Not confrontational. Teachers come up to him saying that's inappropriate, but yet it's okay that another student wears a political agenda shirt, Black Lives Matter, Trump, I don't care what it is, but when I say make mask optional, now it's inappropriate? When does a teacher have that right? When does their personal opinion and agenda, when can it come into play for our students? And it shouldn't. They have one job, to teach our children, they are to keep them safe, and I respect that, but their job is there to educate, not to indoctrinate and not to share their opinions and try to push their opinions on my children. That's my job. As the parent of my children, that's my responsibility, not yours, not the teachers. And so I ask that you guys consider where this is going and the harmful effects, and I just hope that the Board and the school district will continue to be brave as the county has been, and as many counties in the state of Texas have been. They've been a beacon, and I just hope that the school board will maybe be an example to other school districts and consider removing it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Kalani Hayden.
Hello, I would like to introduce myself not only to the Board, but for everybody who has chosen to come here today. Hello, my name is Kalani Hayden. I'm a senior at Montgomery High School. Now, speaking as a student, I can tell you, this has been a very difficult year emotionally, academically, it's been hard. A lot of the things that have been able to help me continue to push through and endure this difficult year is the fact that I still get to come to school every day and learn face-to-face from my teachers and see my peers and participate in my sports and my activities and my club organizations. Sorry, I'm kind of nervous. Unfortunately, over the last year, as we have endured COVID and this pandemic, we have come across the issue of the fact that this piece of cloth has become a piece of political propaganda. But just for a second, regardless of where you sit on that political scale, I would like you to put that aside and think about why you are here today. We are all here for the well-being of the students of MISD. We know that students thrive in environments where they get to be surrounded by their friends and learn hands-on and see their teacher and be surrounded by smiling faces every day. We know this helps a student thrive. On March 11th of 2020, the lives of students across the nation have been changed permanently, and I do not use the word permanently lightly. Students across the nation are lucky if they get the chance to step foot in their school for education. Texas has done an amazing job to encourage students to come to school and making whatever they need to do, they do that so students can attend school and learn face-to-face and see their friends. So far, we have lost a lot to COVID. We have lost homecoming, we have lost games, we have lost friends to online schooling at home because that is what's safest for them. But by following the mask mandate, we have been able to salvage small things, small victories, such as Friday Night Lights. We've been able to have a crowd at a football game, which I know is a very big deal in Texas. We've been able to have indoor sports, we've been able to have basketball games, we've been able to send students to compete in UIL Theater. We have been able to work around the unfortunate world that we have come to live in in the last year due to this pandemic. Right now, we have less than nine weeks of school left in this school year. By simply continuing to do what we are already doing, we are telling students that we care enough about them being able to come to school and learn face-to-face and their school education, that we are able to put up with wearing a piece of cloth over our faces, despite how it makes it hard to breathe sometimes and creates some irritating skin conditions. Believe me, nobody likes the masks, not even myself, but I do recognize the sacrifices that we must make in order to have what we really want, which is as close to normalcy as possible. But there is such thing as rushing too soon, and I am afraid that if we lift our mask mandates in MISD buildings or even make them optional, we are advancing too soon. And even by waiting until the end of the school year and readdressing at the end of the summer, we are allowing for much progression in vaccinations and new protocols, it's just giving us that time. And we are also able to allow students to finish the school year unlike the students were able to last year. Like I said, nobody likes the masks, but by simply recognizing it is a handful of weeks compared to what we have already done, we are doing so much for our students, which is really why we are here. So I ask that you, the Board, and you as the parents and faculty of MISD, to think about why we are really here to meet every day, come to school. It's for the students, and the students like to come to school, they like to participate in their activities, and I would like for that to be something that we think about as we progress with the topic of the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Helmer.
Hello, my name's Dr. Kenneth Helmer, I'm the Chief of Trauma Surgery over at HCA Houston in Conroe, and I'm also a critical care physician, and I don't have my kids in school right now. They're homeschooled. Whether you wear a mask or not really means nothing to me. I'd like to bring another little opinion to this. We could sit here and talk for hours about the science about this virus. I know it very well. I'm in a COVID unit every day, I've seen lots of people die from it, young people, old people, it's just not a disease of, you know, the infirmant. We have 30-year-olds, 40-year-olds who spend weeks and months on a ventilator. And what I kind of wanted to bring to you guys is, you know, this whole mask mandate, to me, obviously is very political. Why it is, I don't know. I'm about as red-blooded as they come, I'm all the way to the right, but there's a reason we don't have high incidence of the flu right now, and that's because we're all wearing masks and we're social distancing. Look at the flu numbers and see what's happened. Yet, we still have this virus that's out there. And one thing I'll admit is, none of these children will probably get sick if they catch COVID, right? But I think what this young lady, and she's so nervous, probably is even more worried about is that her parents are gonna catch it. And you guys, we talked about psychological effects. And you guys, we talk about psychological effects of wearing a mask for children. What about when their dad dies and he's the only breadwinner of the family? Now what? Now we got to move. Now we got to go on welfare. That's a psychological hit too, isn't it? And that's what I want to tell you guys. I think this mask mandate is not about saving our children. It's about saving our community, right? These children will spread the virus. Someone earlier said, "What about people who are asymptomatic? Can they pass it on?" Yeah, 100%. That's how it gets passed along. Most people are asymptomatic. We talk about numbers, oh, 99. whatever percent are fine. Well, yes, most people are fine and they spread it, but those who are susceptible are the ones who are going to die. And if we look at the numbers now, there's been over 100 million people in this, in the world that have caught this virus, and we have a case fatality rate, and it's 3%. 3% of people will die. 5% who catch it will get very sick, end up in ICU, end up not being able to go to work. Could you imagine being in ICU for four or five weeks? What that cost your family? What that costs with your job? And then you come out of it and you're not able to go back to your construction job? So I think there's a whole other societal thing. And I'm pro-mask. I've been wearing masks from the beginning. I go to COVID units. I'm around nurses who are around COVID patients. I see patients who have COVID, and I've never caught the virus because I wore a mask, and I truly believe that. We have nine more weeks of school, okay? We've been doing this a long time. Let's give it nine more weeks. We got the summer, the kids are out. People are going to do what they're going to do out in the community, and then we can reassess it. But at least it gives people the opportunity for those who want it to obtain a vaccine if they want it. And my understanding is today or recently, anybody who wants a vaccine cannot get one in the state of Texas. So again, I implore you guys to keep the mask mandate. It's not about our kids. It's about their parents and their grandparents, and that's what I really want everybody to think about. And it's not about politics, so please keep politics out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.[740.82][740.82](applause). Jessica Grace.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I hope that I'm a voice of reason when I talk about the masks, and it's not emotional or super personal for me. The week before spring break, I was on a call with Dr. Morrison and all 10 PTA presidents in the district, talking about this exact thing and how do, how are the PTAs discussing it? What are moms saying different things? It was a great conversation. There was a lot of, a lot of people learned things in that conversation that they didn't know otherwise, so I wanted to bring that conversation to you because at the end of it, all 10 PTA presidents were in agreement with what I'm about to tell you. My honest feeling for y'all is that I do not believe that the governor or TEA have done you any favors. Putting the decision to wear or not wear masks in your hands is not an easy task, and I want you to know that I am praying that you receive grace and favor from those on both sides when your decision is announced. With that, I want to say that I am a parents' choice advocate. I do feel like as a parent, I can and should be able to choose whether my kids wear a mask in the store or when getting together with friends and family. And honestly, the masks are not something that I ever give much thought to unless it's Sunday night because I need to make sure that they're all clean for school the next day. As I say this, it might sound like I'm going to ask you to make masks optional, but I am not. You see, I feel like TEA is playing a game with us, and for right now, it's probably just best to continue with masks until the end for the sake of all of those involved. Most of you on the board, I would assume, are aware of these facts, but I believe that many people that are here tonight are not. With TEA's guidelines, contact tracing for teachers is going to become a lot more work, especially at the secondary level where kids have been wearing masks all year and they have only been traced during their lunchtime. TEA's current guidelines state that in order to avoid quarantine when a positive case is cited, all students involved would have to have a mask on. So if a parent chooses, there's that parents' choice that we all want, to send their child in a mask and a non-mask student in the class test positive, the fact that some kids don't have masks on means that now probably all of those kids are going to be considered exposed and must quarantine, including that teacher. So let's be clear in what I'm saying. This is not a discussion of whether or not I think masks work. Let's not go there. This is not a discussion of how efficiently or properly our children are wearing their masks, over the nose, not over the nose, down below the chin, a gator, a regular mask. This is a discussion in which parents want to have a choice, but when the school calls to say, "Your kid has been contact traced, needs to be picked up and will be changed to remote for the next eight days, 10 days maybe if they don't get a test," choice is no longer. A parent gets no choice in that, and their choice that they wanted goes out the window, but their child misses whatever they are connected to. I happen to be in a year in which three of my four kids are in a transition. I have one graduating from kindergarten, one in fifth finishing elementary school, and one in eighth grade, all with end-of-year celebrations being planned. I'm sure parents of seniors would agree with me when they, when I say that this is some fun, normal stuff that we've been looking forward to. Parents of seniors have been fighting hard for a prom and for senior events to take place like they used to. But say a senior girl buys her ticket, buys her dress, prom is planned, but she's contact traced the week before prom because we made masks optional. Whether she's wearing a mask or not, she's going to wish that the mask mandate had never been lifted because she wants to go to prom. Choice is again thrown out the window when she cannot attend a school event because of quarantine. At the secondary level, one positive kid with or without a mask on can send home over 100 students and multiple teachers with how many times secondary kids change classes each day. Last week I was driving carpool for, or the week before spring break, I was driving carpool for the Oak Hills golf team, and I had six, seventh and eighth grade boys in my car. I took the opportunity to discuss this issue with all of them because when they got in the car, I was still on the Zoom. Their first instinct, all six of them, was to say, "We want to be done with the masks." But then I told them what the contact tracing guidelines are, when some do and some don't, and that they would be given no choice whether to quarantine if they came in contact with anybody positive, mask or not. Sorry, they realized that one contact tracing could keep them home from two of their only five golf tournaments, and all unanimously agreed that it's worth it to wear a mask for just two more months if it means they get to stay in school and do the things that they love, golf included. Again, I feel like this is a game that TEA is playing. They put the mask mandate in your hand, but they didn't change their guidelines. And personally, I think it's a stupid game. I don't want to play it, but you have to. If you can't get around the guidelines of contact tracing that they have put in place, and that's a big if, if you can't get around it and you make masks optional, then I believe that there will be some unintended consequences for everyone that said they wanted it to be a parents' choice. Thank you for your time and may God bless your decision.
Thank you.[1087.01][1087.01](applause). Julio Gomez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Appreciate all of your hard efforts. Looks like I'm probably a bit more towards the end of, of statements today, and I think a lot of people have already actually said some of the things that I wanted to say. I did want to say that I think you guys have done a very good job so far this year of actually keeping our kids in school. I think if you look at our statistics versus other school boards, we're at a very high percentage, and I think 90-plus percent of actually having our kids in the class, and I think that's great and fantastic, in fact. For me, I just kind of look at it as a risk, you know, cost-benefit analysis, right? We're looking at eight to nine more weeks of having kids wear masks. You guys have done a great job so far this year. The kids are doing well. Jessica Grace brought up a great point in the fact that if we have the same kind of contact tracing measures in place and everyone stops wearing masks, it could be catastrophic for the kids in terms of being able to finish the school years, the proms, sports, and, you know, I'm sure a lot of my friends, and obviously, you know, I'm wearing a mask. You can tell what side in that respect I'm on, but I'm also vaccinated and my wife is half-vaccinated. My wife has had COVID, which my daughter most likely brought home to us from school and was asymptomatic. So indeed, I know there are some other comments. I can tell you that yes, and you can certainly get sick from COVID if someone's asymptomatic. But that, so, I mean, I'm not coming at this from a place of fear. I just think that it just doesn't make sense. I really don't think coming as far as it we've come, having another eight weeks of some discomfort, the benefit of that, I think, could, I mean, look, if, if, if that saves one life, the benefit of having people wear masks for a couple of weeks?
If it does.
I think is very well worth it. What is the real downside? Okay, the kids are going to be uncomfortable, and I get it. I don't like wearing a mask. It sucks. Nobody wants to sit there all day wearing a mask. But I think the consequences, not just to the community as Dr. Helmer stated and just to, in fact, to the kids of not being able to do the things they want to do and have things canceled, to me, the risk does not outweigh the, the benefit of the kids just not having masks for two weeks. It just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. It's, it's not a big price to pay for, for that benefit, so that's, that's just my opinion. Like I said, I appreciate everyone else's comments today. I think they were very good, and it's good to hear both sides. Thanks.
Thank you.[1254.51][1254.51](applause).
All right, ladies and gentlemen, our last one. Unfortunately, I don't have a first name, Dr. Sims. My apologies, doctor.
Good evening, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you all tonight. My name's Dr. Charles Sims. I'm an assistant professor of infectious diseases at Baylor College of Medicine. Additionally, I'm the local health authority for the county, so when all the stuff starts throwing at me, that's why. No one knows who I am because I stay out of the press, but I'm the one who makes a lot of the decisions and advises a lot of the boards on these decisions. Tonight, some very eloquent statements have been made, and I'm not going to reiterate those because they did a very good job. I appreciate the students even coming out and talking because I know it's, it's hard to do that, but it's important. I'm going to take, talk to you just very objectively about this. Right now, in our county, we have about 130 new cases a day. That's higher than our numbers in August when we made the decision to put the mask mandate for schools in, in place in the first place. I was involved in those decisions in July, and it was the right decision. If you look at HISD, if you look at NYISD, if you look at Los Angeles ISD, they're not in school. Their students are suffering with inadequate education, being at home, and all the things that go along with that. A population density of this size of this county, we've done a remarkable job, and y'all should be applauded, as should all the school districts in the county, and I've worked with all of them. Some of them have backed off now, like, we won't name too many names, but there are some counties that have backed off, and we'll see what happens to them. They're smaller school districts, and, you know, we'll see how the data looks in a couple of days. We've already run this experiment in a couple of small schools in the county. Schools made these, private schools made the masks optional, and they shut down. There were one big private school in the Woodlands shut down for almost a month because of COVID cases when they made it optional because exactly as she stated earlier, quarantine rules don't change. You have to quarantine someone for 14 days. If you quarantine enough teachers or bus drivers or cafeteria workers or support staff, the school can't function. It's not just about the students, although our students are our primary goal here. It's about these other people too. Those people have to quarantine as well if they're not, not using masks. We have seen essentially zero cases of transmission within the schools when people were wearing masks. People have come to school with COVID, but they haven't spread it within the school. The exceptions have been a few small sports teams, especially things that are indoor sports who weren't utilizing masks appropriately, and special education where masks weren't necessarily an option. Those have really been the exceptions to that rule. And then one school district in the area that will also go unnamed that didn't require some of their kids to use masks, and we've had to quarantine some classes and some grades for 14 days at that school, getting those schools back, excuse me, those students back on remote learning, which is not good for them. So from an objective standpoint, right now, our numbers are worse than where in August when we started this, so I don't think it makes sense because whatever we're doing in August is what we should be doing now. There's only a few weeks left. I think if you look at the numbers, it's a mathematical certainty that a bigger school district would have to close down within six or eight weeks. This school district's not quite as big. You don't have quite as many positive cases in your school, but again, that one in an elementary school might shut down one class of 30 kids, but one high school student can shut down 100 people for 14 days. That's essentially the rest of their school year in some instances. Again, everyone's made very, very eloquent descriptions of all the ways this affects people. I'm trying to be objective tonight and not get into those because they're all very, very valid and very true, but this is the objectives, excuse me, objective way to look at this. I'm in support of masks. I've made that recommendation. I'm going to be on a call with the superintendents of all the school districts from Montgomery County on Friday, and we're going to discuss it, and I'm going to make that recommendation again. I applaud you all for making that decision in August, and I think it's the right decision to make again now. So I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. I know there's not an option for y'all to ask questions, but Ms. Busby has my email if you need, have, need information from me, or you can go through the public health, contact the public health clinic, Alicia Williams, and she can get you my cell phone number. We can discuss any issues that you need. Appreciate, talked to you all night, and I appreciate what y'all have done for the county.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1531.33][1531.33](applause). Ladies and gentlemen, that's all the registered public comments we have. We will move now into our agenda items, starting first with the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Dennison has motioned, and Mr. Kirby has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. That, the consent agenda passes.[1574.23][1574.23](applause). All right. Moving now to the action items for tonight. Consider approval of a request for a proposal for audit services, the Mr. Chris Lynn Show.
Good evening, board. Dr. Morrison. I'll be brief tonight because I know there's more important topics on the agenda. We, the district has recently issued a request for a proposal for audit services. That proposal was advertised January 28th and February 4th. We received responses from five firms who were interested in providing those services to Montgomery ISD. In your board package, you have the tabulation of the responses that we received, and we're here tonight to make a recommendation that you accept the proposal from Belt Harris Pahachik LLLP for audit services for Montgomery ISD. Just to give you a little background about Belt Harris Pahachik, they have been in the audit business, school audit business since 1955. This past fiscal year, they completed 37 school district audits and a total of over 50 TEA audits. In addition to K-12 work, they also do some higher education work with Texas Tech, University of Texas, and University of Houston. Their proposal was scored, just like all the other proposals, based on the criteria in the proposal, and we would ask that you accept their proposal and choose them to be the audit firm for Montgomery ISD.
Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Belt Harris Pahachik LLLP for audit services for Montgomery ISD.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Hopkins, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And abstain. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, for item 6B, we are requesting, I'm actually going to request that we table that item. Dr. Morrison has a little bit more information as to why.
Yeah, thank you, President Fuller. We take great pride in making sure that anything that gets brought to the board gets vetted properly. We have a vendor that we have focused on in terms of providing energy conservation guidance to our school district to save valuable resources that we can spend back into our academic programs and enhance employee salaries. The vetting, though, ran into inclement weather and spring break, and so there's just more things that we want to do before we bring it forward for the board for consideration. So with your blessing, we will table it for April.
All right, and if you're interested in that, ladies and gentlemen, come back and see us in April, please. Now we're moving on to item 6C, which is a topic that I believe many of us are here to discuss, the masks. And on March 20, on March 2nd, 2021, Governor Abbott issued executive order GA 34, and this came after a year of changes in protocols in response to COVID. His executive order has been touted as opening Texas 100%. However, item 6 of the executive order states, and I'll quote, "Public schools may operate as provided by and under minimum standard health protocols found in guidance issued by the Texas Education Agency." In essence, the governor delegated authority issued by the Texas Education Agency." In essence, the governor delegated authority over schools to T E A. So with those relate, with this, he said that local school boards may modify or eliminate by formal action the mask-related requirements, but that contact tracing and quarantining protocols will still be in place. So our administrative team has been diligently working and developing options for the board. I want to underscore for everyone, even as late as this, this morning, we were still hammering out a few details. A decision has not been made, ladies and gentlemen, and that's why we're here tonight. So, Dr. Morrison, if you would, please spell out our options for us.
Thank you, President Fuller, and I want to thank our audience members who came tonight, whether you spoke or whether you came just to lend your support for the decisions that are being made. Truly appreciate that. You know, I was reflecting, as I was listening to the comments tonight, when I was first selected as the superintendent for Montgomery I S D, one of the first meetings was a conversation with the board about what were our opening plans for the beginning of the school year. And everyone had a fierce determination to want to return to in-person instruction, which we fundamentally believe is the best way for our students to learn. And we didn't have a plan, but we promised that we would do a lot of listening. We promised that we would try to collaborate with different entities and other school districts, and we very quickly put together a plan. And I said, if you remember, our mantra for the year was going to be subject to change, and we have changed quite a bit. We have tried to follow the mandates that we get from different entities, including the Texas Education Agency, but we've tried to bring as much flexibility to that. And I'm really proud of our school district for being able to, at this point of the year, have 94% of our students back for in-person instruction. I remember getting the survey that Dr. Busby did, the first one, and I think it was about 69% of our families saying they felt that they might want to return for in-person instruction. And we put the plan together. We did more listening. We worked with our employees, our principals, our teachers, and slowly 69 became 70, and 70 became 80, and 80 became 85, and, and now we're at 94% choosing in-person instruction, and some families still choosing remote. And we have a fierce obligation to serve all of our families, no matter which direction or which way that they prefer. And so what I want to do tonight is to share some information with you, present some options for you to consider, and then be able to answer any questions as you deliberate and make this very important decision. So, President Fuller, you mentioned the governor's mandate that came on March the 2nd. On March the 2nd, the governor lifted the mask mandate, and immediately people thought, well, that has huge implications for schools. And if you read the governor's mandate, which, trust me, we did many, many times, the decisions for schools were in the governor's mandate relegated to the Texas Education Agency. And we waited to hear what T E A was going to put forward, and we did not get the answer on March the 2nd. As a matter of fact, we didn't get it until late March 3rd, and by the time we had an opportunity to hear from the commissioner, it was well into March the 4th. And, and, and these days, in social media and instantaneous information, that was a lot of time not to be able to talk to our community about what were the parameters and what were the guidelines that we would have to follow. So the governor's order for schools said that T E A would provide guidance and direction. And there are things that T E A did, and I think, I know Jessica Grace is not here today, but I think she did a much better job of explaining some of that than I'm going to be able to do. And so what did T E A do in their guidance? They did reiterate that it was their belief that school districts in the state of Texas should continue with their health protocols, including requiring masks for students 10 and older. But they did provide the opportunity for not superintendents, but boards to make a decisions about masks, either continuing to require them, or making them optional, or not having them in any fashion. And so what T E A also did was to say, as did the governor, that local school districts and boards, as they make this important decision, should not only look at the mandate by the governor, look at the T E A protocols, but also follow the directions and guidance of the local health authorities. And shortly afterwards, we got on March the 5th, as you heard tonight from Dr. Sims, the Montgomery County Public Health District did issue guidance that they believed that we should, school districts in the Montgomery area, continue to follow the protocols that we started the year with, the social distancing, the hand washing, and masks for students 10 and above. So there is what T E A did, but it's really important, and again, I wish Ms. Grace was here because she did a wonderful job of articulating it. It's what they did not do that causes a challenge, and I think for a lot of members of our community, and I've spoken to some of the folks in this audience, as I know you have too, because they, many people will say, well, what if you just make masks optional? And the challenge is what T E A did not do and why that presents a challenge. T E A gives you as a board the opportunity to make changes to the mask requirements. What T E A does not do is to extend the opportunity for this board, your staff, to make thoughtful, sensible, logical decisions around close contact and contact tracing. And so you have to really have lived this the way that our teachers, administrators, families, students have had to live it the entire year. I know more about social distancing, close contact, contact tracing, 14 days, 10 days, what happens if someone's had COVID, what are the implications for vaccinations. I know more than I ever wanted to, but let's talk about what that means. So today, in one of our secondary campuses, under our current protocols that we're following, if the student, if you, these circles represent students, if the student that is highlighted in red contracts COVID, tests positive, then any administrator or school employee that has to start contact tracing immediately has a very simple next step. Was everyone in the classroom wearing the masks? As is our protocol. And very quickly, the answer is almost always yes. And so even though that student tests positive, the six-foot requirement that is still part of T E A, and you may say, well, I heard the CDC changed it to three foot. They did, but T E A has not changed it yet, so right now it's still six foot. So everyone that is in a six-foot radius that has had 15 minutes of time anywhere close to that student is then contact traced, and then we have to start the process that many of our students and our families are all too familiar with, the phone calls. Unfortunately, we have to inform you that your child has been in close contact. They need to be quarantined. Initially, at the beginning of the year, it was 14 days. Now it's 10 days, even less sometimes if you are able to get a, a COVID test. But there's a huge amount of things that have to happen that we've been managing the whole year, but that is the way that exists today. In this example, the only student in that classroom that's going home for 14 days or 10 days is the student who tests positive if everyone is wearing the mask. Now, think about the difference between elementaries and secondaries. Elementary tends to stay in one class the whole day, maybe they have specials, but for junior high, high school, our students on a block schedule go to four different classes a day. And so what we have to do is to say, did that student in all four classes, were they wearing a mask? Were other students wearing a mask? And in the classes the day before, was that student wearing a mask and other students wearing a mask? Because again, close contact is, as defined by T E A, both students have to wear a mask. If both are wearing a mask, then close contact does not come into effect, and the only student who has to be sent home is the student who tests positive. So why is this important, and why is it important in terms of what T E A is not giving you as a board, or me as a superintendent, or your principals, or your teachers, the consideration to be able to do? And as Ms. Grace said, if it's a game, you'd like to be able to have responsibility for all the rules, of which we don't. So if masks were optional, which so many parents have said, Dr. Morrison, I get it, I just, I want the opportunity to make it optional for my child, and I understand some students may want to wear them, and parents may want to have my, their students wear them, I might want to choose not to. And that sounds so logical, and it sounds so reasonable, but if the close contact rules don't change, here's why it is still going to be impactful. So same situation, students sit in the middle of the classroom, contracts COVID, then all the students within six foot, we have to look at and say, who's wearing a mask? If the student in the middle who contracts COVID was not wearing a mask, then, as Ms. Grace said, the option to wear a mask means nothing because those students still have to be sent home by the rules of T E A and close contact. And so not only the students in that classroom, but every classroom that the student has been in that day, plus the previous day, plus at lunch. When we are having students on our secondary campuses test positive for COVID, of which we have had very few, we're very proud of that, the majority of students that we're having to send home tend to be those students at lunch or perhaps an extracurricular activity where they are, for whatever reasons, not masked. But in the classrooms, we've had very low amounts of having to send a number of students home. So again, if, even if masks are optional, we will still be sending more students home unless T E A changes the close contact requirements. The guidance from T E A said that boards should consider guidance from the local health departments. You should also seek counsel from your legal representation, and this board has had the opportunity to get guidance from our legal firm, and our legal firm has said that we should consider all of the health requirements from the public health department, and also consider the protocols as required by T E A. And then you have to make a decision in terms of risk and, and potential liability. So as we have been monitoring and getting ready for this evening's board meeting, we have been monitoring what other school districts in our vicinity have been doing. The vast majority have made a decision that they will continue with their current protocols, social distancing, hand washing, and still requiring masks for students 10 and above. And in many of these districts, they actually went further than we did. The governor's orders at the beginning of the year stated 10 and above, you have to wear a mask. We made a decision that would be 10 and above, fourth grade and above, wearing a mask. Other school districts require pre-K all the way through 12 to wear a mask. We did not. But as you can see, the vast majority of schools within our vicinity are still choosing to continue the mask protocols, with one exception in very close contact to our school district. So in preparation for trying to think about the decision that you have tonight, I did reach out to different stakeholders. We've had many conversations with our principals. They had, they, our principals and assistant principals have had to bear with our nurses the responsibility of all these protocols all year. And so their thoughts, their ideas, their suggestions were very important, and they had a lot to say. As you heard from Ms. Grace, I did convene a Zoom call with the 10 PTO, PTA presidents. It was very important for me to hear parents and folks who are elected to represent the viewpoint of parents and what they had to say. We have a district advisory committee that gives guidance on a number of different things that I bring forward to this board. That district advisory is made up of teachers, of support staff, of parents, of community leaders, and it was important for me to hear what they had to say as well. And then you heard from one of our really amazing students. One of my favorite things I get to do is I have a superintendent's advisory group, both at Lake Creek High School and Montgomery High School, and some of the best advice I get is listening directly from our students. And I had a chance to convene an opportunity to listen to them and, and to hear their points of view. I think the consensus for all of these groups, was much as you heard from Ms. Grace tonight, nobody likes wearing the masks. Everybody longs for the opportunity for them not to be a part of what's required in our schools. But if the overwhelming desire is to keep our schools open, to not close programs, not to send significant students home, then the overwhelming majority of these groups felt that continuing the remainder of this academic year with our current protocols was a sensible, logical thing to do. But I want to reiterate, nobody was saying, we like the masks, we want the masks to continue. Folks long for a definitive end date, but everyone that, of these groups came to a consensus with the desire to keep our schools open, our programs open, let proms happen. And I do think, the only thing I would say is, I think there's many guys that look forward to proms, the girls, and to have graduations and moving up ceremonies and all the things that make this spring a very special time of year in our schools. We did want to get the input of our employees. They have had to live this in a very real way each and every day, as our students have. And so we sent out a survey, and we had the vast majority of our employees, both teachers, administrators, and staff respond. And the surveys, for secondary teachers specifically, the vast majority of our teachers felt that the most responsible course of action was to continue to keep our mask protocols in place for the duration of this academic year. There were 14% that did look forward to an opportunity, perhaps, to reconsider that once they had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. And then there were 25% who would welcome the opportunity to make masks optional somewhat immediately. At elementary, it was 45% feeling that we should continue with our current protocols, 16% feeling that maybe a consideration of making them optional after teachers and employees have been fully vaccinated, and 38% willing to entertain an optional consideration right away. As far as staff, again, very similar to the way teachers felt at the secondary level. Elementary, very similar. And then district staff, again, with the vast majority feeling we should continue with these protocols, 11% saying, at least give us the opportunity to get folks fully vaccinated, 36% saying they would welcome an opportunity to make masks optional now. As you make your consideration, I know many of you have asked, for those employees who wish to get vaccinated, can we get them vaccinated? There has been some heroic, heroic efforts on the part of our staff to get vaccinations available to any employees who want them, from different opportunities across Montgomery County to this very boardroom yesterday, being open to any employee of Montgomery I S D who wanted to be vaccinated, not only our employees, but family members, and we were also able to extend that consideration to one of our neighboring school districts. We believe that just about any one of our employees who wishes to be vaccinated by yesterday had an opportunity to get their first vaccination. Now, as you know, there are three vaccinations, two of which require two treatments, and so following those protocols, if every Montgomery I S D employee who wishes to get vaccinated, again, it's optional, not required, if they got their first dose treatment by yesterday, then you have to wait around four weeks to get your second vaccination, and then you have to wait 10 days to be defined as fully vaccinated. We think that sometime by the late April, early May, every employee who wishes to be fully vaccinated would meet that standard. So scenarios for your consideration. So scenario one would be if you choose to keep the current protocols in place for the duration of this academic school year, social distancing, frequent hand washing, and masks for grades four through 12. That actually requires no action of the board because that's our current protocols following T E A guidelines. Scenario two would be if you wish to make masks optional for staff and students, but we would ask if that is the decision of the school board, to give us a little bit of time to communicate that. As I'm going to go through and explain, there are some logistical things we're going to have to work out because masks, you get to decide. Close contact, contact tracing still remains in effect, so there's some training and new guidelines we have to share with our staff, but we think that could begin as early as April the 5th. Scenario three would be if you choose to make masks optional, but you do want to respect the desire of employees who do want to get fully vaccinated. That would take us to May the 5th, but since May 5th is a Wednesday, we thought May 3rd would be a better date to start that. So scenario three would be making masks optional, starting on May the 3rd. As you consider, I want to make sure that you hear from me. We have looked at every one of these scenarios, and whatever direction this board goes, we will make work, and we will do what we've done the whole year. We will think about the safety of our students and staff, and what will create the best academic programs for our students, and try to make whatever decision that this board comes to the right decision for our school district. For scenario one, I think the challenge, and if I sound a little bit bitter, it's because I am, because in February, we had a meeting with our PTO and PTA presidents before the governor's new mask mandate. And in February, those PTO, PTA presidents were very complimentary of the way we have conducted this year, the fact that we've been able to keep our schools open, and we have not had to be quarantining lots of students and staff, and that we do serve 94% of our students for in-person instruction when the state average is 60. But with that, they talked about a desire to have students be able to have parents back on campus, to have mentors welcome back onto our campus, to make sure we have proms and graduations and other things that are so important to our school experience. And so we started working on those protocols, and that was all, got a little bit delayed as we spent the last several weeks thinking through the governor's and T E A's most recent guidelines. So if we do continue, if your decision is to continue with mask requirements for grades four through 12 for the duration of this academic year, we will be able to return to those plans that we were getting ready to implement before the new mandate. We will start to have mentors come back to our schools, starting tomorrow. We will have parent volunteers be able to come back onto our campuses and do the important things that they do that bring them joy and are a benefit to our students. We will have elementary and secondary PTO and PTA meetings back onto campuses. We are, been working with our senior committees that have been giving me advice all year. We have a graduation We have a graduation events planned for an indoor ceremony at a, at a local college. But if they start to put restrictions based on new protocols that would limit tickets or limit the experience of our seniors for graduation, we will flex to our stadium. And we want to have a great graduation that is not limited in terms of who can come and how our students and parents celebrate. Kindergarten graduations with parents in attendance, optional field trips and field days, high school proms being held, banquets and awards being held, and campus pep rallies of returning not just the ones that are done on Zoom or the ones that are limited in terms of scope. Again, we want to reopen things and have a sense of normalcy return. If the board decides to do options two or three, again, our commitment is that we will do everything we can to make sure that that is the right decision and the best decision to continue our instructional practice and programs. So we will need to make changes to classroom protocols because the mask requirement may change, but the close contact protocols do not. We will have to establish new protocol for our campuses because each day we will have to take daily attendance. We will have to separate students who are coming to school with masks and students who are not, try to do our best to maintain whatever contact is limited so that those students choosing to wear masks are not impacted if there is a positive case in a classroom with a student choosing not to wear a mask. That will require teachers every day to change seating arrangements and to document that. It will have to be every day because a student might come one day on Monday choosing to wear a mask and on Tuesday choosing not to. So that protocol will have to be implemented, and we've got to be rigorous on it because we might have to go back six or seven days to do the contact tracing, and that will be some logistics that we will have to figure out. We know that there will be more requests for parents to return their students to remote learning, so we will have to figure out how to handle those additional. We don't know how many until the board makes a decision and we hear back from families who will tell us that they do want to return back to remote instruction. And we will also have to figure out protocols that will look vastly different than the ones we currently have in terms of the contact tracing. As we've talked about this with our principals, our principals, especially at the secondary level, have said they probably are going to need some help. They have been doing a great job all year with the contact tracing, all of the paperwork that we have to send to the health department. But at this point, an average principal can probably do contact tracing on a secondary campus within an hour for an individual student. It will probably take an administrator the better part of a day to do all the contact tracing where masks are optional. That's just going to be the new reality, and that means we're going to probably have to do some training and bring in some additional staff to help with that. We have been very fortunate with 94% of our students returning for in-person instruction. We've been able, especially at the secondary level, not to have elementary teachers teaching in a hybrid model as our secondary teachers have had to do the whole year. We will try to limit that as best we can, but there will probably be some cases where we'll have to ask some elementary teachers to teach both in-person and hybrid. Again, we don't know that until we know how many parents will ask for remote instruction for their students. We'll have to change some bus protocols, we'll have to do some additional training. I don't want any of this for any way to say, if this is the decision of the board, we will make it work. And I want to be very clear about that. So I want to make myself available for questions you may have. I thought on March the 2nd, when the governor made his mandate, I thought that I was going to be the person making the decision. Found out from TEA that that's not the case, it requires board action. And I, I think as many of our speakers said, it has put this board in a untenable situation. I think the only thing I would disagree with Ms. Grace on is that it's a game. You'd like to think there's a way to win it. And unfortunately, in this situation, you're going to have community members and parents and students and teachers who are going to feel that the board did not make the right decision because everyone, as we saw tonight, has strong opinions. So what I will say is, listening to the guidance that I received from my principals, from PTO, PTA leaders, from the district advisory council, from the student advisory groups, I do think it is the most responsible thing to continue with our current protocols, including for grades four through 12, continuing masks through this academic year. As many of you have said to me, and I am in agreement, we need to come up with a definitive end date for that. And so I think there's lots of options for us to consider tonight, as well as continuing to ask TEA to not give us half of the opportunity. Don't tell this board you have an opportunity to change masks without allowing us to have a reasonable opportunity to change close contact. If we only get one, we will be sending more students home. We will be endangering our ability to keep all of our schools fully functional, and there are programs that we will have to limit that we don't want to do. And if TEA doesn't just give you the opportunity to make decisions on masks, but allows us to make logical, sensible decisions around close contact, then there's other considerations that we can bring to bear. Thank you.
Board members, before we start our, our questions, I do have a comment for Dr. Morrison. And a little bit concerning to me, Dr. Morrison, some of the comments that we heard tonight about some of the way students have been engaged over whether or not they are wearing a mask properly and what they're doing. I, I would ask for you to please follow up with those. We, we have those names from folks that spoke, and I would, what I heard tonight's a little concerning, but I would ask that you follow up and let us know.
Yeah, Mr. Fuller, that's, I wrote the same notes, and I've had spoken to some of the same individuals. I promise you, the vast majority of our employees have done a great job with this. We, we made an impassioned plea at the beginning of the year. You know, we have a daily COVID meeting at 3 o'clock. It is my least favorite time of the day. We find out how many cases we have on campus. We have to do the contact tracing. Are we doing all the things we need to do to follow the protocols and keep our schools open and our students and staff safe? Along that journey, the whole year, we've been asking our employees to make sure that we don't become the COVID police, that we recognize the challenges and the hardship that this has put on our students and staff, and, and have grace the whole year. And I promise you, the vast majority of our employees have done exactly that. There are always going to be examples, and, and I, it pains me. And I will be following up with, with our principals when we meet tomorrow, and I will be sending a communication again to remind our teachers that no matter what direction this board goes, we will respect the decision of the board, and we will treat our students with courtesy and respect that they deserve, and, and the majority of our employees take great pride in. Thank you.
Along those lines, what would your recommendation be for a parent that does have a child come home and tell them stories like we heard a while ago about the way the interaction went when they were asked to?
My, my advice is always to start with the teacher. No one likes the, you know, to feel like they got jumped over. And I would ask any parent to reach out directly to their teacher or whatever employee in the school they felt were disrespectful or did not treat their child with the respect that they should. If they do not get a response back from that employee or they are not satisfied with that answer, then they should go next to the principal. And if they're still not satisfied, I'm very accessible through email and phone calls.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I've asked each board member, I've allotted time for each board member to make comments, give their thoughts on this. And so I'm going to start over to the right with Mr. Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fuller. So, so this is, I, I've lived this with over the last, well, since 2:00 in the afternoon when the announcement was made by the governor. And Dr. Morrison, you and the staff have done a wonderful job in terms of being able to figure this out because TA has not put us in a very favorable position in terms of interpretation. They've put us in the kind of duality of you're damned if you do, damned if you don't in some ways. So it, it's, it's allowed me to take more of a pragmatic look and, and understand this rather than from a political perspective. I think there's a surgeon who was here earlier that made that comment, and it has, it has become very emotional for a lot of folks. But what, what's not emotional is the fact that our kids are in school in, in terms of what everybody wants. So from the emotional standpoint, we want our kids in school, and that's where, that's where I stand. I want them safe, and I want our family and community to be safe as well. What I would say is, we need to continue to press TEA to get better guidance, to make sure that when they put something out, that they don't put us in a situation where we, we don't have a clear path and direction. The guidance needs to fit across the, across the spectrum of, of, of the information that they're sending out. So I, I think from, from my standpoint, I want graduations to happen, I want proms to happen, I want the kids to have as normal life as they can. The young lady who spoke earlier, it took a lot of courage to get up here at your age to speak in front of a board. So thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. I think the board does too.
Ms. Turner.
I have a couple of questions for Dr. Morrison. Since our students in third grade and below have not had to wear the mask due to their age, but they still had to go by contact tracing guidelines, what have we seen this year in those grade levels as far as how they've been affected by the contact tracing guidelines?
Yeah, it's a, it's an interesting juxtaposition from the secondary experience of contact tracing, where almost always it's K classes, students are wearing the mask, then we have to go to lunch, and, and we're sending usually on average three to four students home because of the close contact quarantine tracing. At the elementary, it has been different when it's a grades, you know, pre-K through third grade. And as a matter of fact, the week in, leading up to spring break, we had to send an entire third grade class home at one of our elementary schools and an entire kindergarten class. And, and we had one parent very upset because their child was opting to wear a mask, even though that's not required. But again, this is the part where you, you almost have to do a tutorial because contact tracing, close contact, is if both students are wearing a mask, then only the student who tests positive has to go home. And so we've been able, we've been very fortunate because our pre-K through third grades, the classrooms are large, the kids tend to be a little smaller, we've been able to space them out. We've been fortunate a lot of times to not have to send the entire class home, but we have had to send too many times an entire class home for, for quarantining.
With those questions asked, I would just like to say that whenever I was campaigning for school board, I made it clear that I'm a person of faith and that the one promise that I made was that I would always be praying for wisdom before every board meeting and helping to make decisions for this district. And I have kept that promise. And over the last few weeks, I have been praying diligently for wisdom in making, in helping to make these decisions. For me, what it comes down to is voting in a way that provides the best education for all students. My own family is affected with the mask. I have a daughter who has a physical disability. She wears a hearing aid, and the mask affects the hearing aid. And also it, her mask tends to get wet. We've also had a family member that was very, very affected by COVID. But in making decisions for the district, I'm not just looking at my own situation, but what's best for all students because every family is affected in different ways. And so I just would like for everyone listening to know that it is, I'm looking at what's in best interest for all students and their education and safety and health.
Mr. Hammons.
So I actually have a ton of points. I don't know if I'll get to any of them or all of them, but everybody pretty much knows my stance on this. We're following a bunch of arbitrary rules, and we're not arguing, not talking about the logic and facts of any of this. We're all talking about how are we going to comply with these arbitrary rules that are set down to be complied with based on whatever the whim was when they're developed. New facts come out, such as they are deemed as facts, and we still don't change anything because TEA has dictated that we don't get to change it. I'll also go back to the point that I believe TEA is the purveyor of the STAR test, and I don't think I've ever heard a teacher talk highly of the STAR test. So the education agency doesn't do that well, from what I hear, and now we're taking health guidance from them as well. That's concerning. Again, facts don't matter. We can go through facts. It's all about following the rules. The one major point I leave it with is, when we don't have the option to choose for that, we're making a choice for half the population. They have no choice. So the other half that wants it for their choice and for everybody to have a choice is really taking away for the rest of them. But it all goes back to this arbitrary rule we're trying to follow.
Ms. Port.
Okay. Well, I, being a former teacher, I, I realize the complexity of the contact tracing. In the graphic that Justin Moreno, I give, you give him credit for that, really stuck in my mind. If you have a high school student that is testing positive, and you have a classroom, and he goes to different classrooms during the day, the teacher, the, the compliance efforts that she would have to go through to mark who's in what seat, you know, in that period, and then the next period, and following all that through, the bureaucracy becomes very burdensome. And I think it's, I was thinking of all that you said a while ago, removing the mask would be expensive in time and personnel and instructional minutes. You know, it's, it's, it would be expensive to us. I think it would be in the best interest of students and staff who have overwhelmingly, I think, said across the board, we have a majority of teachers that want to keep it because I think they know the difficulty it would bring on, the upheaval it would bring to the end of our school year. So I'm in favor of staying the course for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. You know, this has been, been, been on the board for almost six years, and this is one of the top three most difficult decisions. I think it's most, the most polarizing because there's, there's not one side that is, that is a majority versus the other. It's, it's very, it's very polarizing right down the middle, and you have to separate sometimes your, I know we don't want to mention it or bring it up, but we sometimes have to separate our political beliefs from what our job is as a, as a trustee or a board member. And that's what I've struggled with. I prayed a lot about it as well. I've lost sleep over it. I've talked to friends, I've looked for advice, but there's, there's no definitive answer, and I haven't gotten a consistent answer from any, any one person, people that I put my trust in. But in saying that, being on the board, school, children, education is our priority. That's our priority, is educating our kids and providing a safe environment for the teachers and our kids to do so. And, and that includes, you know, kids being in class, face to face, on campus. We mentioned it earlier, and if we're going to promote this, and we're going to follow this path, and we're going to have our mentor programs back, and we're going to work on proms, and we're going to do graduation, we're going to get people back in the schools, that is the priority as far as I'm concerned. I, you know, I listened to Ms. Hayden, phenomenal job by what you came up and said because that's a voice of a lot of students, and what I've heard is, I don't want another senior class to lose their senior year. I don't think that's acceptable on, on my watch or any of our watches. I, I think that if there are rules in place that, that arbitrary, I, I agree with Gary that they are, but they are being mandated, and we do have to follow them. I think that we need to provide prom, we need to provide graduation, we need to provide a special moment for them because they've earned it. They spent, you know, 11, 12 years, maybe longer, in school, and it's time for them to get, you know, get their, get their turn. And I, I believe if we do that and stay this course though, we have to have a definitive end. We have to say when this is going to stop. We have to put a date, a time on it, and, and in the meantime, evaluate what TEA says, and if they make any changes, we, we shuffle with them.
Mr. Dennison.
Mr. Kirby's kind of explained my view almost exactly. I want to give our students and staff the schools back by Mr. Dr. Morrison, you know, allowing all these programs to come back. Let's finish the year strong, give the kids the schools back, and see what brings next year. And that's, that's what I want to do.
All right. And now for mine, if y'all will indulge me for just a few minutes. For the past few years, the administration, most of the folks seated right over here are teachers, principals, Dr. Morrison, everybody's been working really hard on COVID. And since the start of this month, we have dealt with masks nonstop. I haven't heard a single person, as has been said many times tonight, I haven't heard a single person say that they love these masks, and by golly, I'm great, I'm so glad we get to wear masks. I have heard a few people say that we, they recognize that masks have kept our schools open, that masks are why we have 94% of our kids in place. I worry about the masks, what they have done to our kids. I worry about the ways in which they've adversely affected the psychology. I see it in my own children. I see it when I walk on your campus. It hurts, and I'm, I'm really kind of worried about their social and their, their physical well-being. Since Governor Abbott's executive order, we've all been dealing with this. We've had countless emails, text messages, meetings, conversations. I don't go to Kroger anymore because there's people that just grab me in the meat department in Kroger and, and give me an opinion. Most of those people that have contacted me, about 65% of them have urged us to keep the masks for the remainder of the school year. That really closely approximates what we saw with our teachers. Since close contact measures are not, are not going to be lifted, since they're, since they're going to be in place still, we don't really have much of a choice, ladies and gentlemen. If we do what my heart tells me to do... If we do what my heart tells me to do, which is let the kids smile again and let the kids see their teachers, and let the kids know, you know, see the emotions that they have. If we do what my heart does, I see a very likely future where we're all back in front of a computer screen for remote learning very quickly. And I want to avoid that, I want to avoid that. I've worked with local elected officials, I've been in their ear every day almost, telling them, please, write letters to TEA, please, tell the governor, they're in session right now, tell the governor, please, let TEA change some of this, and as of yet, that language hasn't changed. Personally, I believe this is all illogical. Three feet, six feet, the basketball team doesn't have to wear masks, but the theater troop does. You know, who has the authority to make this decision, who has the authority to make that decision? TEA says this, UIL says that. I think it's all illogical. Makes it really hard to follow, like Mr. Mr. Hammons has said. This board has talked about this a lot, and I think one common ground that we have in common is, is that we don't want to see, that we think some of this is contrived and nonsensical, but we don't want to see our kids back in front of a computer screen in remote setting. So here's where I stand. I see keeping the masks as, keeping them on the books for the remainder of the school year is the best way to keep the largest number of kids in face-to-face learning and support our teachers in the best way we can. What we've done in MISD with 94% of our kids back is nothing short of miraculous, and that's because of a lot of the people in this room, ladies and gentlemen, and a lot of people that you get emails from and a lot of people that you get phone calls from, and your, your, your teachers. And I really think if you, even if you don't agree with whatever happens tonight, whatever vote we take, please find a moment to tell them thank you, because they are, they're doing yeoman's work in a time that we weren't trained for this, educators are not trained for this in one bit. Last March, the government agency said in a moment's notice, y'all get to pivot to remote learning. I don't want to see that happen again here in April. I worry that masks being optional will result in that, and for this reason, and since most of our teachers desire it, I plan to vote to maintain the mask requirement for the remainder of the year, but only on two conditions. I will not vote for it if it goes past the school year. We need an end in sight. I can't, I can't do this anymore to our kids, we need an end in sight. And secondly, I only plan to vote that way if we can offer the town some tangible, meaningful ways to return our schools to something that looks like normal. Extracurricular activities that you've talked about, Dr. Morrison, our mentors, they haven't seen their kids since when, Ms. Portman?
Last March.
In over a year, our mentors have not been there, our watchdogs. I used to be a watchdog. I haven't been in a, in a campus for a watchdog in a long time. And I really encourage you, please, whatever happens, whatever vote is, is the outcome is, please, help us get our schools open. Our kids need those programs, our kids need that time. And so as I see it, maintaining TEA's position is, is the best way to keep the kids going, and, and I don't like it, but that's what I, I think we need to do, and that's how I plan to vote tonight. So, ladies and gentlemen, are there any questions? Any comments from the board? All right, hearing that, does anyone want to entertain a motion?
I have a question about a motion. We, we've got four options. Is, is it okay to make a, a motion with a caveat or accommodation of those?
You can make the motion however you want it, if you're planning on making the motion. It does need a second and a vote. Anyone?
With that being said, I'll, I'll make a motion that I move the board past the following resolution authorizing the continuance of the Montgomery ISD mask-related protocols through the remainder of the 2021 academic school year, and authorizing the superintendent to make masks optional for students and teachers beginning May 31st, which is the end of the school year, and the motion to be revisited if TEA makes any changes to current guidelines.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hopkins has seconded, Mr. Kirby motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No, although Trey, your, your motion is very logical and well-thought-out, but I have to vote no on moral grounds, I think it's time to shut it down. We've played too long.
Abstentions, there are none, that motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, this has been a interesting time to be a board member, so if, if anyone's interested in being a board member, come talk to us.
Mr. Fuller? Just listening to the consensus of the board, I think there is still a desire to continue to ask TEA to allow this board to make logical, reasonable changes to close contact that maybe would allow us to have some reconsideration, or at least have more guidance going into next year, so is there a direction that the board wants to give on that?
I, I personally would.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of what, what my statement was earlier, is we need to, we need to have some frank discussions with TEA and try to get better, better guidance and push for that guidance as well, particularly with close contact. It's too nebulous right now.
Shall I make a motion to that effect?
That's helpful.
Do we need that? Okay. Well, I will move that we adopt the following resolution that authorizes the superintendent to seek responsible modifications to what is considered close contact for purposes of requiring quarantine and further authorize the superintendent to modify the district's mask covering requirement should TEA modify close contact.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Hopkins seconds. Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And abstain, that motion carries. I'll be glad to make some phone calls with you. Ladies and gentlemen, we still do have some items on our agenda. We have some information items, monthly financial reports. Are there any questions from Mr. Lynn on our monthly financials?
Good.
All right, hearing none, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, the open session is, is concluded. We do have some work to do in closed session, we will be back, but thank you all, and board members, we'll be back shortly. This is the, returning from our executive session from May 23rd, 2021, MISD School Board, are there any motions from executive session?
I move to approve personnel decisions as discussed in closed session.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Dennison and Hammons abstain, that motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.